All right, seven.
Is it seven? Okay. All right, ready? Seven PM and August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and we'll call to order Kaiga Heights Board of Education meeting. Will the treasurer please call the roll?
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Etter?
Here.
Ms. Prowse?
Here.
Mrs. Decker?
Here. For present, one absent. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in actions of the board may participate. However, we have no one here tonight. A copy of the board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Please silence your cellphone. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will see for, take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Prowse, second by Mr. Dobbins. Any changes or discussion? Okay, take a roll.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. And we have no comments from the public tonight. And we'll move on to treasurer's business. Take motion for that, or discussion first?
Discussion.
Discussion first.
Cool. I ask for items four A, five A through five M for approval tonight.
Okay, so moved. Hey, moved by Ms. Prowse, second, second by Ms. Etter.
All right, so just kind of going through the items here, five A, we just have, believe, two new vendors. First one is Brisk Labs Corp. for AI software for educators here at the district, one thousand dollars from the general fund. And the other new vendor is a book company, that's for college credit plus textbooks, approximately two thousand five hundred for the year that we have. Purchase orders over five thousand, we just have four. The first one would be Agile Sports Technologies, that's our Huddle annual fee renewal. And Huddle is a product of Agile Sports Technologies, which is a sports performance analysis platform. It offers video analysis, coaching tools, and performance analytics to analyze game footage and track player stats. It's used pretty widely. That's ten thousand eight hundred for the athletic fund. Number two is the ESC of Northeast Ohio, that's for our communication services, blanket PO, and the amount of forty-five thousand dollars from our general fund. Number three is Lysinc Crup Elevator Corp., that's for our elevator service agreement rollover, a blanket purchase order. The agreement was approved back in two thousand eighteen for a five-year term, and this agreement's a rollover for an additional five years. That's from the general fund, six thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty cents. And number four is Frontline Technologies, this is our annual renewal agreement with Frontline for absence management and human resource software. From the general fund, eight thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. If there are any questions, please feel free to. Just one then and now certificate, this is for our Valley Bloom Therapy Group. The invoice is dated six twenty two thousand twenty-five, and we board approved the purchase order at the Board of Education meeting, six twenty-five twenty-five, so we have that there. Just as then and now. The next couple items would be our new grants that were released by the federal government and passed through our state, the Ohio Department of Education. First one is for Title One, and our amount is fifty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. There's always a reallocation of it down the line, but that's the preliminary amount that we have with fiscal twenty-six. We plan to use that grant to pay the salary of one Title One teacher and for educational services, supplies, and equipment. The second one is Title Two A, that's in the amount of nine thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And then we plan to use that grant for educational services, supplies, and equipment. The third one is Title Three. We join a consortium through the ESC of Northeast Ohio, because any amount less than ten thousand, you're required to. And our amount for Title Three Language Instruction for English Learners is five hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, so well. The next one, Title Four, that amount is ten thousand dollars, and that's the same, we use it for educational services. The following one is for IDEA B, Special Education Grant, that's for one hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. And we plan to use that grant to pay the salaries of two special education teachers, and we've been doing that for a number of years now. I, it's gonna be also IDEA, that's Early Childhood Special Education, and that's one thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents, and we use that for supplies.
Excuse me, ma'am, just wanted to ask, were any of these grants, and these are all federal grants, correct? Were any of them surprises, or were they more in line with what we've been receiving in the past?
All of them are the same ones that we've received year over year, they're a bit less than what we.
Some of them are, I think the Title One, the IDEA appear to be a little bit less. Two and four are in line, but as Matt said, there's a reallocation, it occurs later. And if you have fewer students, if you have fewer students that qualify for Title One, your amount's gonna go down. So there is always gonna be a little fluctuation, plus there are some carryover provisions as well, so any unspent dollars within the guidelines of the grant may be carried over then and stacked on top of that too. So I anticipate all these are going to, well, not all of them, but most of them are gonna increase, the ones we didn't spend on.
And our Title One A grant, the first one that you talked about, you said it would be for salary of a Title One teacher and educational services. Is that teacher already identified?
Yes.
And is someone that has been getting this grant in the past?
It's, did you?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Dendia over in any elementary school. She's, I've been back, this is my sixth year, she's been back every year that I've been back with the district. She may have come the year before me, I think, and this, these funds have been used to
Offset.
Offset her salary and benefits the entire time.
Do they come in as if it's the same person? So there's a certificate that I did fill out from them, the teacher that can have, keep on by.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Letter J is gonna be, so this is a request from Suburban Health Consortium. So if I scroll down here, I go to our admin content, this is an email from, oh, did I forget I?
Yeah.
Last one. Oh, that was Early Childhood Special Education, that's our one thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars, seventy-eight cents for supplies.
You did, you got it.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
J is gonna be from Suburban Health Consortium, so we check out this email here, and it's gonna be from Rocky River Schools Greg Marcus, who's the president of Suburban Health Consortium. He asks, one item to note is the amended and restated consortium agreement that was introduced back at the April Suburban Health Consortium meeting for consideration and feedback. Chess Sumters, legal counsel for the consortium, has provided a red line and draft clean copies, as well as a summary document and other historical documents. These are all attached here. The only change from the draft presented in April is that we are now requiring at least three meetings of the full membership of Suburban Health Consortium each year. Annual meetings plus two additional meetings instead of two total, the membership can always call for additional meetings of the full body as necessary. The intent is to have this approved on Monday for Suburban Health Consortium. And membership can always, or excuse me, and then each member shall take this back to their local boards for approval by August thirty-first. So this can be put in place for October first. So that was asked of us by Suburban Health Consortium. And we have a outline of the changes that they're proposing, which I'll open here, just to summarize. So there are four that we have, and the first one talks about membership will no longer be limited to public school districts. Suburban Health Consortium may consider and approve for membership other political subdivisions, such as public libraries. So that just helps grow the consortium. Obviously, they would be vetted before they go in, but adding more members lessens the risk for everybody who would have, so.
But that doesn't mean it wouldn't include voucher schools or other schools, like local private schools?
No, that's not really the intention of it, it's more directed towards libraries, and that's what legal counsel felt was maybe the best, uh-oh.
Later.
Does it have other political subdivisions, so that would?
So Mr. Mucho, just to follow up on your comment and Ms. Etter's comments, I assume that under any scenario that SHC, the consortium, would retain exclusive right to include or maybe deny a potential applicant?
Yes.
So it's entirely within, would remain within the purview of the consortium to make that admittance decision or admission decision?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, that's happened with a couple schools that they've looked at to potentially be included, and it's a complicated process. So it's not, you know, somebody kinda comes and, you know, says, we wanna be included, and they just come in. There's a, you know, vote that takes place by the members, and they're vetted by Assured Partners, which is the third-party consultant for the consortium. So, yeah, there's a lot of, you know, behind the scenes, just to make sure anybody potentially who would come in, you know, they have low claims.
Okay.
Get go and look at their, their current healthcare plans that they would have. Number two would be, so they're looking to, so Suburban Health Consortium Board of Directors would be reduced to nine members in three separate classes of directors, with each class consisting of three directors. So the three classes of directors will have staggered one, two, and three-year terms. So nine members in total for the Board of Directors in segments of three, first three, second three, third three. And then the first three would have a term of one year, the second three would have a term of two years, and then the third three would have a term of three years. So just to have, you know, some people that have been on there long enough, but rotating members. So if it were to be the six of us, Mark and Jen would have three-year terms, Maria and Stephanie two-year terms, and then Matt and myself one-year terms. And then we would rotate off, and then George and Hartman will come in and replace us with you guys there.
So Mr. Mucho, would, at some point, would you explain or clarify whether, what kind of roles and responsibilities the Boards of Directors, these staggered directors, would have, and how they might differ from what the current Board's authority is?
Yep, so let's say the six of us are members of the Board of Suburban Health Consortium for different school districts. Kaiga Heights, Garfield Schools, Independent Schools, Matt, you can be Independent Schools, listen there. Orange Schools, so all the different schools in the consortium. And then what they do is they carve out and say, these nine will be Board of Directors. And then those nine essentially are gonna be ones that work on issues behind the scenes, so kind of like the exec committee that you would have. So, you know, if they're looking to price out, you know, new plans, or look to switch to prescription drug vendors, or as we switch from Medical Mutual to Anthem, you know, the nine of those would be involved in kind of vetting and doing everything in more detail behind the scenes. So more work for the nine, but since there's nine members, you know, it's kind of split. But that's, they just do more work for the consortium.
It is, is that, is that pretty consistent with how the current Board responsibilities fall out? In other words, right now, I assume that it's the entire Board that has this responsibility? Whereas going forward, if this were approved, it would be narrowed to maybe a nine-member group?
There actually is an exec committee now.
Okay.
A branch from all the members, the Board members of Suburban Health Consortium, and it's that exec committee which kind of, you know, makes those determinations and planning and everything behind the scenes, I wanna say. But now there's kind of more of a defined, you know, rotation that we have, and it offers more people to maybe stay on longer, or some people to come on short-term, just to say like, hey, I'll give my two cents for a year, then I'm off, and maybe I'll jump on the next year or something like that. So it gives more flexibility to more people to kind of, you know, partake in this.
So if each, if, well, how many, how many schools presently, districts are in the consortium?
Eighteen-ish.
Eighteen-ish? So if this were reduced to nine, then essentially it'd be every other district, if nothing else were to change, every other district. So how does that work relative to the district that would be ceding their authority to, do they cede their authority to some specific Board member? Or is it, or is it just that they don't have that authority? I mean, obviously, they can pick up the phone or email and communicate informally.
Right, it's like Greg Marcus, for example, so he's the president on the exec committee, and I'm not. So, you know, he's doing all the due diligence on this amendment and the change from Anthem to Medical Mutual. So he's really getting in on the weeds for those items. And then what he'll do is he'll bring, you know, once they have a recommendation, he'll bring forward to the full Board, and they'll say, this is why we're recommending it. And, you know, the full Board has super and treasures on it, and then they kind of explain, this is why we're going from Medical Mutual to Anthem. And then the full Board discusses and says, we're either gonna vote or not vote on it. So they bring all items to the Board of Suburban Health Consortium. So they really don't make any decisions per se, but more kind of guide the recommendations and have kind of working groups behind the scenes, just to work on. There are a lot of issues that come up with Suburban Health Consortium, so you almost need that exec committee just to work on day-to-day.
So is it, is it fair to say that, that it seems almost that the, the change in structure within this Board of Directors is somewhat analogous to the exec committee, or would there still be an exec committee? Or is it basically, does this staggered board kind of assume that responsibility in the exec committee?
Yes, they would be the new exec committee.
Okay, so, so someone is still tasked with carrying out those very detailed tasks and sharing that information with the broader membership?
Correct.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sorry to keep extending this.
Yeah, it's, it was getting to the point where nobody really had maybe time and stuff, and they didn't wanna, you know, take short straws and say, everybody pick one of those.
Right.
Maybe this staggered approach could, you know, give some more flexibility and say, okay, we're only asking for a one-year commitment, you know, there. Things, you know, get heavy at certain districts, and then that way, you know, they can just get more perspective from other members, so I thought that was a pretty good idea.
And is there still going to be a, essentially like a management group, in other words, who would be worked, hired by or retained by as Board of Directors?
Yes.
To basically implement whatever decisions the group makes?
Yes, so we have Assured Partners.
Yes.
Which is our third-party administrator or management group that we have. So they really are the ones that are tasked, they're kind of like the GPD to Suburban Health Consortium, you know, the architects that would be there. So, but they have all the expertise on, you know, kind of those matters and whatnot. And then also too, there's legal counsel that's really involved, Chess has been there for, I think since the start.
Okay.
So you have legal counsel, you have Assured Partners, which they have a whole team. And then we also at these meetings invite Anthem and then Prescription Drug to come and talk as well. So there's a huge team that kind of, you know, encompasses, encompasses, you know, all the daily workings that kind of go on there. So it's a pretty, you know, it's a pretty good structure that they have.
Okay, so I, I take it from your comments and your description of this, I don't wanna pull words from you, but I assume that we are being asked to approve this restructured proposal of the Board of the Consortium, and I assume that you're supportive of that idea if the Board were inclined to support that as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Number three talks about adding different members. So what they would do is they would tier the votes. So as we can see, the bullet points at the bottom, consortium members with fifty or less employees would get zero votes on matters. Consortium members with fifty employees but not less than seven fifty, so in that range would get one vote. And then consortium members with over seven hundred and fifty would get more than two. And then my question to them was, well, why are we tiering it that way? And they said, well, this is kind of an enticement for those larger districts, like Akron, Cleveland, and whatnot, that have more than seven hundred and fifty employees to come in if they're, you know, deemed a good, you know, less risky member to join. And then you kind of have to sweeten the powder, you know, dangle the carrot to say, you know, we'll give you two votes as opposed to all other school districts getting one. But currently, all the members in there right now would qualify for the one vote. I think Brunswick's the largest school district membership, and they're less than seven hundred and fifty employees, so. It's just kind of something there, as they explained to me, an enticement for another school to come in. So, for example, like Matt would have two votes, I would have one vote if he was, you know, that school with eight hundred.
Is anybody close in the current schools, the seven fifty?
I think Brunswick's around, I forgot how many they have, but they were less, I think they were far less. So I don't think they're, I don't think they're like two away or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
It's like, oh, hop on, get that two votes, but, yeah, so that doesn't change, and we don't have anybody less than fifty, so we'll run it up.
I'm trying to say they don't want long-term, why would you, when you're in a consortium, if you're doing it all?
Right, sometimes, you know, libraries hop on and, you know, you know, it could be a better health consortium to join, and then, you know, they wouldn't necessarily have a vote to do anything, but they're like, well, we like the way things are run there, and we'll, you know, let you guys kind of roll with it. Some other consortiums do it, like the CAG, Star County Council of Governments. It's more of kind of that structure where there's not too many votes from member school districts, and it's really left up to an exec committee pretty much. This one's different.
So at present, then, all consortium members, as it currently stands, no one has less, would have less than one vote?
Correct.
And are you or Mr. Young are representative on this consortium, Mr. Mucho is, okay.
He's the point, he's the primary.
So he, you're the, I understand you bring things before the Board, which I appreciate, but I also understand that someone has to be the little man, so to speak, to relay the Board's decisions, so thank you.
Yep, and we have our Healthcare Cost Containment Committee, which we have to really shorten that acronym. We have that kind of, you know, as the, the voice that we give everybody here, and we meet and we try to have those discussions. We've met, you know, a number of times, really leading up to that switch from Medical Mutual and Anthem, remember, it was meeting around that time. So, and I actually have that later on in the agenda, that is probably a good time to call for another one of these meetings coming up, probably in the month of September, as we go. And then just the last one talks about, you know, while responsibility for financial transactions will remain with Suburban Health Consortium's fiscal agent and treasurer, Suburban Health Consortium Board of Directors will have the authority to outsource admin duties of the fiscal agent and treasurer. So the current, the previous fiscal agent treasurer, who's still the fiscal agent treasurer, was the treasurer from Orange Schools, Todd Puster. He retired, and nobody really wanted to do the fiscal agent work for Suburban Health Consortium for a number of reasons. You know, it's too much work, or they're unfamiliar with, you know, what's needed. So Todd, in his retirement, agreed to still carry on doing the fiscal agent, and the Board of Directors essentially had to modify this agreement that we have in place to allow for something like that to happen. So Todd's actually been hired through Brexville Schools, so Brexville's now the default fiscal agent, and they've essentially outsourced it to Todd. So that was, just to keep Todd on for a little while longer. And it, it's his plan to transition, I wanna say about two years to leave, so they're really trying to find somebody to do it, but it's a big commitment and a lot of time, so we'll see what happens in the future. But those are the four items that they have for changes.
Thank you for that explanation, I do appreciate it.
And then K, L, and M deal with a notice I got from STRS. So let me pull this up here. So STRS reached out and said, Matt, can you help us out with updating their records, our records? And I said, sure, and I guess this is something that's never really been a front-burner issue, but more of a back-burner issue. But my understanding is maybe some people are looking to retire from STRS or whatnot, and they're trying to close the book on, you know, any outstanding items that, you know, would be out there floating, so they're just trying to, you know, make sure all their files are kind of correct before they close the file up and put it in the file cabinet. So our pickup plans that we have in place, the most updated ones that they have are from two thousand three and two thousand eleven. So what I'm doing now is updating them to the best of what we can do as of our current date of two thousand twenty-five. So I pulled this up here, I have a little chart, and we can see that the rates had been ten percent from two thousand three to two thousand twelve. And then in two thousand thirteen, they went up. So if we were to have, if we, I don't know.
Are those R rates, or are they like state?
No, these are state rates.
Okay.
Your computers are starting. Sorry, technical difficulty.
Hartman loves to do the update at the worst possible time.
Give me a second here. Okay, which one would you like, the types or? Everything is rebooting all of a sudden. Matt, we cannot get the computer to dis, never mind, hold on. Unless you all wanna watch Netflix in the middle of a board meeting, I think we're okay now. Okay, which one would you like, this one right here? Sorry about that, so this?
So we can see that the most. So we can see that the most updated information that they have is from two thousand three and two thousand eleven. The district, if we go back to that page and pull up the rates. So if we had been doing it the way STRS would have wanted, we would have sent in this information right around two thousand twelve-ish in that ballpark. But the district, I'm not sure what happened at that time. I went back and tried to look through some of the files, but can't really see anything from what I was able to gather. So this is just going back in time and to the best of our ability. And from what they told me, I can certify it from my first day here, which was two thousand eighteen. So I can't certify it before then because I wasn't here, so.
But it had four different treasures in that time period, starting around two thousand ten to twenty sixteen. You probably have four, four different treasures, you probably lose the institutional knowledge
Yep.
about what was going on. It wasn't really until you came along in twenty eighteen that the treasurer's office has become a stable department.
The three of those do is it just picks up plan information that they have on their records. And we update it for what the percentages should be, which by law was fourteen percent. So basically, it's just going back in time and saying this accounts for the fourteen percent. Back to two thousand eighteen, because I can't go farther than that, you know, I can't grab two thousand twelve. So even though there's elapsed, it's the best we can do sitting here. And, you know, it it, from talking to two people on the phone at STRS, it should suffice. And if they see anything that, you know, causes it not to some way, that they'll, you know, contact me about it, so.
It's just record keeping though, it doesn't have anything to do with what we actually made or.
It's just record keeping. Yeah, it's like, so pickup is, so really pickup's given to certain employees that we have here at the district. In order to be able to give pickup, pickup plan technically has to be on file with STRS. So, you know, if we have an employee, you know, Bob Smith, and Bob Smith has a contract as superintendent for the school. And board says, okay, we're gonna give Bob Smith pickup in that contract. Well, in order to be able technically to give pickup to that employee, a pickup plan has to be passed by the board, which is this that we're doing tonight. Saying that, yes, we're picking up according to the law, which is the fourteen percent. So it's really just record keeping and saying that the board's saying, yes, we will institute a pickup plan for certain employees that we have here in the district. And all the employees that we're covering, the buckets that we're creating are employees that we currently have, the buckets that are needed, so. It's just record keeping, there's really no impact to it. It's just going back and giving them records that they say they never had for our school for all the years.
Yeah, two thousand eleven was when the embezzlement occurred, so that's when the last time that something was sent up to date to STRS. So that that probably explains why there was a break in the record keeping.
And that's what it looks like.
Yes, that's what it appears to be.
It really only has to be sent when a change occurs. So back to that rates, you know, they've been two thousand, or they've been fourteen percent since what, two thousand thirteen-ish, I want to say.
Yes.
So that was the last time something was needed. So every time the rate would change, something would have to be sent in, but they haven't changed in approximately ten years or whatever. And those are the items I have tonight for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, so we'll take a vote on the treasurer's business. Consent agenda approval.
Ms. Press.
Aye.
Mrs. Ender.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Decker.
Aye, motion passes four zero. We'll move on to section seven, treasurer's discussion and comments.
All right, so just a few items for discussion. So the first one is gonna be the five, the new forecast that we have. So the new forecast, and we talked about this at our last board meeting, it's gonna switch now to less than five years. And the initial filings due by August thirty-first and the updates due by February twenty-eighth. However, for this year, the forecast is due by October fifteen. So down there in the admin content, we essentially have two ways we can go about to work on the forecast. It could be option one, which is at our October first board meeting, we would have a review and approval of the forecast, so all together as one. Or review it at our September seventeenth meeting and approve it at October first. I'm kind of leaning if we may be away from September, only because I think they're asking for more items than usually included in there maybe. So that would give me time to put everything together. Now, one thing we could also do is we could call a special meeting around October as well. So like we could review it October first and then call a special meeting to approve it and then send it in before October fifteen. So that could be something good too.
So we plan to approve it on the first and then decide that night, like if we just feel like we need more time, then we could do a special meeting, but.
Absolutely.
And we'll be with that.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Oh, good idea.
Perfect.
Here goes your forecast.
But there, a lot of stuff's changed, you know, that's.
Yeah, this this is gonna be a different forecast than you've ever done before.
It's unfair that they're changing what's been done. And you have a system in place in a planning and when to meet your deadlines and now they're changing, then of course you don't have any rebuttal but to do what they ask.
Yep, yeah, exactly. And then the other two items, so B talks about our rates. So on Monday, August eleventh, so about nine days ago, at the Suburban Health Consortium meeting. It was proposed by Rocky River Schools to have a rate increase of eleven point five percent. And the members voted in favor of that. It was pretty overwhelming too. So and even one district voted no on the increase because they felt it should be higher than eleven point five percent, so that was pretty interesting. So now the eleven point five percent will be adjusted to fit in with that bucket approach methodology that they had approved a year ago, which we voted no on, which they were kind of tearing it off, if we remember. So we can see that the base increase is eleven point five. However, it's gonna fit within that bucket approach, so it's gonna be less for HSA and a little bit more for the PPO plan that we have out here. So maybe it's gonna be closer to twelve, the PPO plan, for HSA maybe in the ballpark of about eight, give or take. And we can see over the years that it was twelve point five, but that was also in that bucket approach methodology prior year. And then thirteen percent, six point seven, two and zero. But then we can also see the cash balances. So in two thousand nineteen, it was twenty million. Two thousand twenty, thirty, two thousand twenty-one, thirty-one million. And then two thousand twenty-two went down to twenty-two million, then to thirteen million in two thousand thirteen, then to four point six million in twenty-four. And with two months to go, currently it's at three point seven, so it's been on the downward.
What is the fiscal year for this consortium? Because our fiscal year isn't like July one to June thirty?
Yes, it's different.
What is theirs?
Ten one to nine thirty.
Oh.
Yeah, nothing.
Why, why is it like that? It doesn't even match up with the s- with the schools fiscal year.
Yep, I agree. It would be easier if it was seven one, or even January first to December thirty first, but no. That's the way they've had it for a number of years.
Is that when the consortium was formed?
Yeah.
How you potentially aligned to the formation of the consortium? I don't know, I have no idea, it is.
Doesn't seem odd that it doesn't conform with either like a calendar year or or school year, the school fiscal years.
Yep. That was my first question, first day.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing. And then, Matt, if you were to tier over and we just go to the last item, last item for discussion. It's just because of all this, you know, looking to call one of those health cost containment committee meetings, probably in the month of September. You know, discuss it with the two unions, there's different, you know, changeover in leadership of both unions. So we could talk about the finances, the rate increase, HSA. There is a possible switch for prescription drug. And there is a possible narrow network that they're talking about with Metro Health, University Hospitals, UH, and the Cleveland Clinic. So that could, you know, people are just, you know, having their network be the clinic. Let's say, for example, you know, there would be less, a less of an increase in rates. So I think the consortium's trying to get creative and say, you know, we're gonna offer potentially this plan that's out there for the narrow network. And if people like to take it, it's gonna be not as high rates as maybe the, you know, general PPO plan that we have, as you can go anywhere.
So you're saying they would select one of those three, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there would be another carve-out plan.
Like a preferred provider.
Yes, essentially, so we would have, so we kind of have our two plans, HSA and our general PPO plan. And then we would have an additional plan for maybe anybody that wants that network of just the Cleveland Clinic. Or anybody that just wants Metro Health, or anybody that just wants UH. So that would be voted on by the full consortium. They haven't done that yet, they're talking about it. And it would be an option available to schools that would be out there. So the consortium would establish this plan and say, okay, this is one plan for any school district who wants it, for the clinic, for Metro Health and for UH. And if Independence wants it, if Wesley wants, you know, one of those, they can go and say, okay, we're gonna offer this to our employees now and have that in place.
So you're saying the benefit might be with a lower cost to the individuals.
And the school, yes.
The district. They would have to specifically, all, so you're saying everyone would have, in the district, we'd have to pick the one or individually you.
No, it'd be a third, it'd be a third option.
Yeah, so it would be just, yeah, an option out there. And somebody would say, oh, that works perfectly for me.
Sure.
And then that way, you know, they could hop onto that plan, less cost for them, the fifteen percent, less cost for the board of eighty-five percent. So if that goes into place, it's just gonna be a positive, another option that we have, another way to lessen the cost on the board and employee.
But based on the balances, they better start looking for some cost savings someplace.
Yep.
So Mr. Muccio, given that the board just within the last few minutes approved the reorganization of the board of the consortium. This proposal, if it came to pass and and there were either a second plan or a third plan offered and or the rate increase is potentially on the table. This would be one of the first circumstances or instances where this new restructured board would have authority and some members wouldn't to to voice their, obviously you can reach out to your follow-up board members, I assume.
No, the whole board would vote on this.
Oh, they would?
Yeah, they would bring it forward and say.
Irrespective of this reorganization that we've just discussed.
Yes, yeah, they would bring it forward and say the full board, that's my understanding, the full board would vote on this matter and not just the nine members.
Okay.
But the nine members would go out and do the research, put together the presentation.
Gotcha.
And make the recommendation, and then it's for the membership to vote.
No, that's the way they explain it.
Is that the way?
It could be the nine members doing it.
No, I I just want to make sure I understand that that what the linkage is, if any, between these these two or three proposals, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you for doing all this work on this healthcare consortium and as the rates continue to climb, this is a lot of, a lot of work.
Yeah.
And also with the timeline for the five-year forecast moving up too. Okay, moving on to section nine or section eight, superintendent's business.
All right, on the consent agenda, we have items ten A and B. I'm sorry, I gotta go up higher here. Eight A and B, item nine A, items ten A and B, item eleven A, item twelve A, then items thirteen A through G.
Take motion, superintendent's consent agenda? Moved by Mrs. Press. Second by Mr. Dobbins. Discussion?
Okay, under eight, this is the general business, so we have a motion to approve the superintendent to enter into agreements for student activities such as prom, for example. If there's a fundraiser that has a hard deadline that would need to be entered into prior to a board vote. The way that mechanism works is have a conversation with Mr. Muccio, then I reach out to the the board president, board vice president, to get the the go-ahead on that. Just to make sure that we are all communicating and nothing is just done completely independently. And then eight B, if you recall last meeting, we entered into an agreement with Timothy O'Keefe for the the SF fourteen paperwork related to students who are placed in our district but are actually residing in another school district so that we can receive funding for their services. We thought it was in the best interest to start approving this at a board meeting. Those two, those students who are qualifying as tuition-free underneath this very specific set of guidelines that Mr. O'Keefe or whoever in the future would replace him is working with. So we've listed those students in the administrative content for FERPA reasons. But essentially, we had a conference with him and he is going to be reaching out to these entities. Two of which we had received partial payments from in the past and those payments stopped. And so he is looking to get that payment exchange happening again. The the third case we have kind of falls under a little bit different category, although all three are considered foster care students placed here. The part of policy that 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 particular student falls under is a result of, you know, some hardships and and things like that within the family structure. So all we're doing here is very specifically denoting why some students are attending tuition-free, because that does, it's a very rare case. Therefore, it's better to go ahead and account for it as opposed to have people say, well, why, why do they get it and we don't? This is related to foster care and then the exchange of money between school districts, correct?
It's tuition-free, but you're still, Mr. O'Keefe is still trying to get these.
Correct.
Yeah, because technically they don't, they don't live in our district, so we, they should fall under our tuition program and we should be charging them the the tuition rates at the, it'd be the high school and elementary school.
Reimbursement, so to speak, from the other school districts.
Yes, because while they are in flux, they are attending tuition-free. So that tuition fee is being waived because they fall into this very specific set of guidelines.
Or another way to look at it could be, so Tim will keep services, you know, he works with foster, you know, place.
Foster and court placed children.
Foster and court placed children. And, you know, he'll upload and research the required documents that are needed up in the system with ODE. And then those students hop on and get the state of Ohio to pay for their education. And we get more money for those students than we would as opposed to being in that kind of purview that you have in place. And then sometimes some issue comes up. So we could have one of those students, you know, for the past five years, let's say, for example, we're getting money from the state. And then an issue comes up out of the blue. And then we're kind of in a pickle where we're trying to fix the issue, but we don't have a guarantee that it's gonna be fixed. And then we have a student who'd been attending here for five years and could be in their, you know, senior year. And it's not in the benefit of the student because they could be half-time here, half-time at the CVCC, you know, all those years with everybody here. And then it's like, well, we're still working to correct any issues that there would be, but we want to give assurance to the guardians and the family members to say, you don't have to worry about, you know, any of the behind-the-scenes stuff, you know, just focus on the school year and, you know, we're here to support you guys. So that's really what we're doing is we found ourselves in a pickle, you know, some issues and we hadn't kind of disclosed over there. And this just kind of, you know, brings it forward and says, we're documenting documenting them in this way so that they can attend, just so everything's on the other end, is what we're really trying to do.
Yep, yep. All right, under nine, we have staff resignations. We have one resignation that is Mrs. Bartosik is a student monitor. She's been with the district for several years in many capacities and she has an opportunity to do something related to her career field. Potentially at the Career Center. So that's something that she's always dreamed of doing and she still wants to stay connected with the school in some ways. But this is a good opportunity for her and we certainly thank her for her employment, past employment and commitment to our students. Under ten, these are employments of classified staff members. We have the employment of a cafeteria staff member. Again, at the last meeting, we had a resignation of this cafeteria staff member. This is the employment of a new staff member pending all the the background checks, which have all cleared. That person will be coming in step one up to four hours unless the supervisor changes those hours. We have a student monitor, this is Grace Lasky, graduate of the district, coming in at step one. She will be working lunch recess duty over at the elementary school. Always something we, any of our lunch duties are difficult times for us to cover because teachers are having lunch at the same time. And so to find staff to cover those time periods can be tricky. So Grace is recommended as a student monitor to assist next door. Eleven, this is employment of substitute. Eleven, this is employment of substitute and volunteer positions. This is the updated list that we get from the Educational Service Center. You'll see that two individuals are highlighted in blue that are on the list. So we will do this every month, even if there are no changes, we will update or give the updated list for approval. Under twelve, this is employment of supplemental positions per the check contract. So you will see girl soccer coach, scoreboard operators, announcer for varsity football. Additional scoreboard operators have been added and then scores for soccer. So you have a number of different positions there showing the percentage of the contracts, all based on years of experience and the step that we, that we associate with those supplemental contracts. And then thirteen, these are agreements, contracts and memberships. So A is, is the largest one here. If you recall, if you recall back to June thirtieth, when we moved four million dollars as a result of trying to protect money for permanent improvements as a result of uncertainty around House Bill ninety-six and the cash carryover cap connected to our capital improvement plan that was developed by the best committee last year as well as a long range plan that Tremco had laid out for us, and I had shared that with the, the board prior, showing that in, over the period of time, we have different sections of the roof that require different amounts of work based on how much water has gotten underneath the, the barriers. And that was listed out from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. And this was a motivation for a good portion of why we moved the, the four million dollars. We know we have, we have some water damage to our roofs that have to be replaced. Uh, and so they have done a diagnostic survey. We are looking at two sections. If I can get this to rotate properly, we're looking at this section right here. This is showing, uh, earlier back in July, we approved them to come in and do a thermal scan of the roof to determine the, the condition of the water damage. Both of these sections were thought to be under five percent water damage, which put them into the category of restore. All right, which is a little, which is the cheapest of the options on here. This is above the fifth grade area. So if you could, you think this is, this is Mr. Taylor's room here. This would be Miss, Miss Benina. This would be Mr. Williams. This is going back into the fourth grade area. So this is at the elementary school above that area. You'll notice if you read the report that it was thought to be under five percent. It's actually at eleven point seven five percent water damage to that section, which will drive the price up nine thousand dollars more than what they had estimated. So when you look at, you look at this analysis here, you'll see three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. You'll notice that what we're recommending is nine thousand dollars more. That's because it requires additional materials and additional work because of that amount. Now, didn't hit that twenty-five percent threshold, which would kick it into a more serious category, but, so there's that. And then this section of the high school has four point four two percent damage. This is, really, it's right outside of where we are right now, going down the science wing, above those science rooms and Mr. Martin's room in the corner, Miss Swatzky's room. Uh, that's the section of the roof. All can be done without disturbing the educational process. It's not going to, not going to make noise. It's not, you're not going to have materials in the way. You might have a dumpster that we have to, you know, bring in and out each day, but it's going to be something that can be done while school is in session. It can be done this fall and completed before the rainy and cold season comes, which is always a good thing because we're going to get in under, you know, cheaper prices.
Based on what you're telling us and the increased damage, it sounds like there's some damage.
Yeah, we have some sections of the roof that are complete fail, in complete failure, that have to be, get done next summer.
Are these the worst sections or these are not the worst?
These are not. These are the best sections that require the least amount of invasiveness to the educational process.
Okay.
Uh, the more-
Having that on those two ground, um, that's where there's additional water areas. So what they do is they cut off insulation.
Yeah.
Resol insulation.
Yeah.
On the way, appropriate so they could do the, the older leg, which has twenty year warranty on it, so.
Yeah, there's no water damage to all this section here, which is why it's, it's a, it's a minor, considered a minor repair. Whereas these are the da, these are the areas and they're showing you those areas over here.
Do they have any reason why those areas that seem to be concentrated in one area?
I didn't ask. I didn't ask.
Or if there's like sun or something or?
Probably the way the wind, the way the wind blows, this is the, the east side of the building. I don't, it's hard to say, um, the way the water is maybe sloped there.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Burek made reference to a, a twenty year warranty, hopefully if things go well. Is there an annual maintenance or inspection requirement that, that, that's attached to that warranty?
We, we do hire Tremco to come out annually to inspect.
So we, this, that would be an ongoing?
There'd be an ongoing inspection fee. I think it's, in the past, it's been around fifteen thousand dollars a year. Is that what it was?
That, that's fine. I recall doing that in past years, but I just didn't know if separate apart they-
So they pay like a, like they do with a one year review of it and then coming three years, I think after that. Just the one year the manufacturer has warranty and then the other nineteen years is on Tremco.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and they said they anticipate these warranties to last beyond, uh, they have evidence that some of their products could last up to sixty years.
Yeah.
So it's going to outlast me.
Good.
So these inspections, we, that they do as part of the warranty, they still will charge us for them?
Those inspections are not as part of it.
Okay, and then do we have to pay any type of, um, into the warranty every year? Like sometimes when you get a warranty with some-
It's, it's part of the price.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have the other-
Like a maintenance warranty, like you-
To do the other part with like fifteen thousand dollars, using the general, the whole facilities, making sure there's enough, um, areas that are being-
Some, some projects like this and, you know, like, I don't know, for like waterproofing, for example, you have to pay into the warranty every year to make sure that it stays valid.
Yeah, that has not come up as, as a discussion item when we met with them.
This is very costly.
They are, um, they are a member of what's called the AEP-A consortium. That's consortium. It's a joint, yeah, purchasing agreement. And they then are affiliated with Ohio Schools Council. So what this, this mean, when we talk about state pricing, it means that contracts have already been bid out. So you have the option to go through the formal bidding process or you can allow them to accept them as the vendor and they, it's already been bid out. They then have more control over who they bring in and it's a more efficient process. And so if you look, um, and I've got all kinds, like I said, there's all kinds of attachments here that talk about what the AEP-A is. The requisition is there, the brochures, but down in the admin content, we did do verification from Ohio Schools Council. You'll see the email with Tammy Perkins that, um, it says, per your request, attaches the signed contract between AEP-A, the National Consortium that bid roofing and the selected vendor, Tremco Weatherproofing Technologies. So this is verification from OSC. And they sent us over the contract as well, so that we actually, we didn't take somebody's word for it. We've got the documentation, so. Go ahead. Yeah, we've got board policy here, sixty-three twenty. Do you want to talk about that? Cause-
Yeah, we have it highlighted. We scroll down right there. Talks about that when the board determines to build a repair in large, improve or demolish a school building, the cost of which will exceed the amount to be determined and published by the Ohio Director of Commerce. For the purchase or lease purchase of school buses, the treasurer shall obtain competitive bids. So we know that this threshold, it's three hundred thousand dollars that we have exceeds it. However, uh, the board may elect to forego the bidding of contracts in any of the following situations. So pursuant to revised code, the board participates in a joint purchasing program operated by or through a national or state association of political subdivisions in which the board is eligible for membership or through the federal government or another political subdivision. So we are a member of Ohio Schools Council and then they go through the purchasing program of AEP-A. So that's how this fits within our policy. So we don't have to go out and competitively bid it, but it has been.
Yep.
So I do have a follow up question for either the Mr. Young or Mr. Muccio. I take it that with this structure and with Tremco's authority with the OSC, that we don't need a project manager in this case? Or, or we, we may not need one?
Tremco becomes the, the project manager.
Yeah, because they've, they've undertaken certain, I don't know, representations or guarantees or warranties with the OSC that kind of backstops their work. And, and I'm not, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. I'm just trying to understand this. But it would seem that the district might be saving the cost and the time associated with managing a project manager's kind of-
You don't have to get GPD involved with this because Tremco is serving as the GPD for the roofing project here.
Exactly. That's where I was trying to go with this. I'm not trying to- Exactly. Whereas they, they supervised for us, they supervised the Hill project and, and other physical improvements around the district. So we as a district would be realizing some, I'm going to say some savings as a result of not having to go through the, the bid process with GPD and hiring GPD as a project manager. Again, nothing against GPD, but it, it is a savings. I, I'm assuming it's a savings.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no, it's not necessary. It would be wasting.
All right, thank you.
It would be wasting money if we did that. Yeah, so again, it's, it's a big cost, three fifty-four, eight seven four and sixty-five cents. So three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars essentially for the first phase. Next phase would come in the summertime and you're probably on a summer cycle after that because everything else would require a much more equipment on the ground, noise, disturbance to the facility where summertime is going to be necessary. So we thought this was a good time to get this done, again, using that showing, because we, again, we don't know legislatively what could change in the future. We are showing that we have moved our money for a specific purpose and then we are now enacting the plan in a very transparent way. All right, so, um, so that's, that's the, probably the, it's the biggest item on here? No, it's not, because Mr. Burek has a bigger item on here, but it's an annual item. But this is something that is, that is new and will be the, you know, third major project that we will have done in this calendar year between the hillside, the, the fire and security systems and now starting the roof.
So is it fair to, to, to say or to take away from this conversation that if the board would approve this Tremco contract and to repair the roofs at the elementary building, that that building would, the roof structure of that building would largely be a subject of annual maintenance and inspections and things? But it would be off the table in terms of future roof repairs and we now could focus on this large building with the middle and high school?
Yeah, we will move to the next, the next phases of, of this, of this plan.
That's good to know. We can put that behind us, so to speak.
Yeah, cause like I said, there are, there are some areas here that are, like, you'll see the bulk of things are in twenty twenty-six. This is where we're going to hit the replacement phase because a couple of these roofs, especially Roof End is a big section of roof that is, um, it, it's, it's needs completely replaced. And you have an air handler that got repaired, that is again, broke again this summer, that would have, probably have to come along with that, take that unit off, replace roof, put the new unit back on. So there'll be an air handler cost that comes with that. So it's, it, it's, it's the cost of doing business, but I think it's the smarter way to go than to try to ask the taxpayers for a bond to do this, which would take many, many more years to pay back. You could do a lot more. But it's also an expense that I don't think people want to take on at this time.
It is an interest component to the bond.
There is. Well, there's an interest. You're in debt. Yeah. Mr. Muccio could no longer say that we're, we're, uh, we're not in debt and, you know, that's something we're just, we're trying to do and maintain that status as long as we possibly can, so.
Another thing about the journey experience process is these, these portions of roof in the upper section, just taking care of that now can do as well as the next level. It's saving harsh losses out, you know, so like, that's part of the heavens, my own place, that you know which quarter is, um, you want to back, you can get the next.
Yeah. Yeah, so we've been with Tremco since the nineteen nineties, at least as far as the records I, I have. I don't know if we've been there with them earlier than that, but it's, it's a long relationship and the people that they have in place now are very responsive. They've been very good to work with. They've been very thorough. Uh, they've, they've given every documentation I've asked them for, so I feel good about the project. All right, next we have, uh, we have the data privacy agreements. We do have a lead sheet Mr. Hartman put together and has taken the time to get all these agreements. So these are all the, the softwares that we have in the district in which there could be the potential for data exchange between us, that vendor, and then bad actors that are out in the field. And this is saying that these people are conforming to, if you recall, Senate Bill twenty-nine was a, um, was the, the bill that came through last year that affected policy sixty-four sixty that says we are required to enter into these agreements. There are some that are a bit, I want Matt to explain this real quickly here. So if I go to, where's Project Leadway? Uh, I'm gonna pull this one. Is this it? Yeah. You'll see it's Twinsburg City School District is listed on there. Well, we're obviously not Twinsburg City School District. Twinsburg was the first school district to sign off on it, and so their name is on it, but the Data Privacy Act applies to all districts in Ohio that use Project Leadway. It's, what did they explain to you, Matt?
They were negotiating LEA and that as well, like them being a parent of essentially the whole area one. It applies to Ohio standard, so it's not like it's, it's one size meets all school districts, pay them seller data, it's F E, F E compliance as well. So it's just blanking even under it. There's another school in there, I believe that has a similar, like, um, it's not linked there, but it, I'm not able to change it either. It voids the contract, so it's something that practically the way it said it.
Yeah, Twinsburg reached out, negotiated the agreement based on that. And so they put Twinsburg as the parent, um, parent school district, but it applies to all of us.
So they all meet the same requirements, they do not sell their data, use it for any marketing or anything like that, so we're all compliant.
Yeah, and so all this information is, can be found on our website because we are required, once it's approved, we're required to publish that so that parents can go and look at all of our licenses and then see how they protect the data of our, of our students and staff, so. So that's what this is. Uh, next is an agreement with Magic School. Magic School is an AI software service. Think of it as like the Google Classroom of AI. We joined a consortium through the ESC of Northeast Ohio to get a very cheap price, which is why it's thirty-three hundred dollars. Yeah, we get a discount on that because we're part of the Northeast Ohio Consortium. And what it's going to do is, as we are required to create policies and we know that artificial intelligence software is just going to be a part of, of the future. Uh, Ohio State, for example, by twenty twenty-nine, every, every program will be aligned to have AI literacy and AI component, every single program. Students need to learn how to navigate within these ecosystems. How do you do that in a safer environment? Magic School will allow us to do that. Instead of being able to go out to ChatGPT, for example, it has its own GPT called Raina. And all of that is exchanged within that ecosystem of Magic School, uh, to kind of, again, protect it from some outside influences. At this time, it's only turned on for the teachers. So the teachers are able to use it. We are going to figure out what, uh, the relevance is at the various levels. For example, it may not be relevant at all for students at the elementary level, but still relevant for teachers. You get into middle school, it may be relevant, may become more relevant in certain classes or for certain subjects with extreme guidance. And so we may turn on certain features for the students or a certain grade level, for example. You can't do it for individual classes or individual students. It has to be by grade level. Then when you get into the high school, when we're ready to, to go with that, maybe it's turned on for all the students and they'll be able to operate in there, but there will be classroom guidelines that says, well, you, you can go in there and do it. But if you turn in something with that, it will either be accepted or not accepted based on what the assignment is or what the particular teacher's guidelines are. So we're taking, taking our time with something that is changing more rapidly than we can even, even keep up with, but- than we can even, even keep up with. But, uh, kind of excited about what it can do for us. So stay tuned for that. We may even give a little bit of an update, but this is, the, the concept of A I is something that I'll be working with our student leadership groups to help develop our policy through the lens of the students. So we'll get some student feedback in that policy, which is an important piece as this is going to affect everything, uh, moving forward. Letter D, Edmentum. This is for credit recovery courses. Um, it's, it's actually cheaper than the credit recovery courses we were paying for through the E S C of Northeast Ohio who dropped that program. So we were forced to pick up our own program and Edmentum allows us to do that. We're purchasing five, uh, five courses for a total of five hundred and fifty-one dollars. So it's very cost effective and allows us to work with students who didn't pass a course. They need to pass the course, but we don't want to hold them back, uh, and slow down their progression to graduation. So. Next we have our updated co-curricular activity fees going back to August first. So we're retro approving this. The reason is, so we had to transition athletic directors and this didn't get approved prior to August first. So we had to have done mid-July. And, uh, we dated it back to August first so that people could have purchased the athletic passes because we knew we had contests that were starting before tonight. Some families were purchasing the fifty-dollar fall pass, seventy-five-dollar winner. Well, maybe not the seventy-five-dollar winner pass yet, but the all season pass for a hundred dollars. We wanted to make sure that this was effective back to August one. So those are those updated fees. Yep.
If somebody's in golf, they have to pay three hundred dollars for the golf equipment that they use?
If they lose it?
If they lose it.
Oh, if they lose it?
Yeah. If we supply it and they lose it, that's the cost you pay.
Oh, okay. I thought they just take, pay that just to.
No, no, it's, um, where is it here? Where's, where's it say golf?
Lost, damaged.
Yeah, it just says lost. Yeah, lost damage. Yeah, I see it here.
All right, thanks. My eyes just.
That's okay. Uh, letter F, this is to approve, uh, one additional student for the non-public transportation. Uh, we do the in lieu of transportation cost here. So this is that agreement with that particular family. It sent the board information last week that that may be changing in the future, what that process looks like. And then letter G, this is, this is the biggest expense we have annually. This is, uh, with respect to like a single purchasing for staff. Uh, this is with the E S C of Northeast Ohio for our gifted intervention specialists, our social worker, speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, psychologists, student attendance, educational aides, uh, people service compliance assistant, R B Ts, the registered behavioral technicians, um, student attendance, substitute educational aides, those are all listed there. And that is listed here on the personal cost sheet for a cost of, uh, one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars. We've fluctuated around that particular point, uh, here for, for the last couple of years since we moved our intervention specialists over to our teaching staff. This has pretty much stayed within the typical.
Price, price has centered about five percent this year. E S C only did two percent raise. One last year, this, this year, in the past, probably five years or two and a half, uh, for this three years. So it's a, that's, that's part there. But just like I said, when it was, uh, cost, it's their, um, insurance cost. So like that's, you know, you see what it's actually is. It's, it's pretty high. Uh, usually when you say what's urban, it's charging us a different price there. It's substantial.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but this is, this has been within a hundred thousand dollars the last couple of years. And you know, these are all pretty much, a lot of the positions are tied to actual student need. And so they get accounted for when they are doing, um, maintenance of effort. It's not called catastrophic costs anywhere. I always. Threshold costs. Those are all things that they have to report to state and federal government. So.
It fluctuates. There's, there might be time in the year where we need to approve some of them. I know there's another position where it means you're like this. Two hours later, probably.
Yeah. I think that the trade-off we, we have to remember is that we're paying a few extra dollars to have people support our students when we would have been out placing those students. And you saw we outplaced one student right now at a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. At one time we had nine in the district when we first came here, nine students outplaced. Those students are now in our, in our, uh, actual school district being educated. It's cheaper to do that than it is to, to outsource. Now outsourcing may have its, you know, may be necessary for some students, especially if we don't, if we can't possibly provide the education because of ser-, you know, services or facility. But.
The reason why I'd say this is we hired so many specialized positions, uh, and we didn't have to, those people could support a variety of students. So it's not this, you know, everyone wants to, it makes us not a, as a, as a organization, just provide a lot of support to all students. You know, when you outplacement, um, you know, you're paying a lot of money. It's just, you know, you're kind of doing that for that organization. So those people you're paying for your, your child, that's good support there. So I think it's more of a, yeah, yeah. So it's definitely more cost effective. The O S C, you know, educators, you know, teachers, you're running their home public school, uh, and all the stairs. And we go to that next step. Uh, there's always a large process that you gotta, that's right in your, um, that's like a, you know, great job of trying to, you know, support staff and bring the places to be successful during the hot, you know. One of their neighbors, one of their, their peers that are in their community. So it's, I think it's really, really good change. You know, if you, uh, you know, over the last ten years I've been here, I mean, it's, I started soft, we've kind of had some positions and there was a cost of, you know, to the benefit of the kids and to our schools, to the charities, uh, for the years.
Yeah. Yeah. You'll notice we have a couple of recent graduates on there. Nicholas Moore Mile and Anthony Zatilla. Uh, Anthony was a graduate in twenty twenty. Nicholas Moore Mile in twenty twenty-two, I believe, twenty twenty-one. Yeah. And, uh, you see the benefit of being under twenty, twenty-six years old, right? Living at home, right? They're able to, they're able to utilize their family's insurance. I know I've got, I've got one of those at home myself. So it's a good benefit for them and good for us too. Those are, those are all the items. There were a lot, there was a lot there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Young. And, um, so any other discussion? If not, we can vote on the superintendent's consent agenda.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Mrs. Duck.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. And we will move on to section fifteen, superintendent's discussion.
Okay. School starts tomorrow, right? Starts for our students tomorrow. It's, it's really exciting. And we had our staff come back this week, uh, starting on Monday. And I just can't, I can't give out enough thanks to people from, you know, our maintenance crew who has really worked under very challenging conditions this year, navigating big projects. And, uh, we were actually a little short staff because our summer workers took, took jobs elsewhere before the summer started. And our cleaning staff that came in and picked, picked up some of that work and worked over the summer. You know, our transportation folks getting, uh, the bus routes ready, getting our buses ready, doing E S Y. And we had summer school teachers who were, uh, helping our students bridge some gaps. We had coaches who have been coming in and advisors. Uh, the administrative team has been working extremely hard. Uh, tech department, you know, you just can't throw out enough thank yous to everybody. And, uh, thanks to, to Mr. Dobbins for coming and giving the opening, uh, remarks at convocation. It was a, um, I think it was a pretty honest opening, wouldn't you say? Talking about the challenges that public schools are facing and we specifically have, have been facing here and the advocacy efforts, correct?
I, I thought so. Yeah. And your, your follow-on, uh, comments to your staff, I thought was very, uh, was very insightful. So thank you for, not that I was expecting or trying to build upon my comments, but yours, I think really drove home the, uh, the significance of what's at, what's at play.
Yeah. And I think at the end of the day, while, you know, we're talking about what feels like doom and gloom in a world of public education. The message to the staff was, you don't need to worry about that. You need to take care of these children and you need to take care of each other because there is really no better place to be than Kioga Heights Schools. I, I honestly believe that. I'd, I'd put us up against anybody. Everything we need, everyone we need to be successful is here within this schooling community. Students, the staff, the community members, everything we need. And we will continue to do what we have to do to, to advocate, but at the end of the day, those students matter. And if we build those relationships and those students feel like this is, this is their home, this is their place to be safe. This is their place to learn. This is their place to leave their little legacies along the way. Everything else is going to continue to take care of itself. It really will. Nobody is going to shut down a successful school district. And we have to continue to embrace that. We have to market that and we, we cannot, we cannot be our own worst enemies. And sometimes we can do that. Um, but everything and everyone we have to be successful is right here and we have to be a team. And as long as we are going to do that, we're going to be successful. And I think that was kind of the closing messages as we left.
That's right.
That particular.
I agree with your sentiments. And, and I would just echo what you said in the sense that, um, you know, through all of the challenges that our district has, uh, has incurred over the nine years that I've been doing this work, um, and even beyond that. Um, the staff has always consistently kept its focus on educating our students to the utmost ability of our students. And I think that's highly commendable to, to disregard and, well, to disregard and to, to put the students' interests first and foremost.
That's right. So the back to school bash was successful, the open houses, the, the meet the teacher, a night over at the elementary school. Uh, it's just been a great transition and we look forward to everybody getting off the school bus in, um, eleven hours. It's coming. We're pulling into the parking lot. I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I know your daughter's going to get up at two in the morning.
Apple are on my phone like yesterday.
Yeah. The bus is coming. That's right. So really looking forward to that. Um, some good news. Our, uh, earlier this week, U S News and World Report released their best high school rankings. And we are back in the rankings. Uh, for a couple of years, we weren't there and it was because of the COVID years. These results or these rankings lag, these are from twenty-two, twenty-three. And what's amazing is we've only gotten better since twenty-two, twenty-three. And these are among the best results we've had. We're ninth in the region. We are twenty-ninth in the entire state of Ohio and we're, um, we're seven hundred and seventy-three out of almost eighteen thousand schools in the entire country, public schools. I mean, think about that. We're in the top, we have been, been in the top twelve hundred, I don't think. We're at the top eight hundred right now, twenty-ninth in Ohio out of nine hundred and three public high schools that were, that were rated. So it's just absolutely incredible. Um, it just shows that we are a top-tier high school, that we have outstanding staff, students, community, extremely proud of, of, of everybody. Uh, it just, it just tells you that, um, what we do here is exceptional. And we continue to evolve as the students' needs evolve and as legislation evolves. We continue to, 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 to ring the bell, step up every single time for our kids. So, um, well deserved by, by the high school, uh, staff.
Does anybody see that reported anywhere on the news or anything this week?
Did we?
When did this come out?
This came out on the eighteenth.
So it's Monday.
It came out on Monday.
Does anybody see it on the news anywhere?
It was on the news. I think today. Yeah. Yeah. I believe, I believe we were because our, uh, news people contacted me and said, it was already on W K Y C. You know, we're going to publish it ourselves. And can I get a quote from you?
Our, our communications people were going to send out a release too? Okay, good.
It's going out soon. Yeah. I've got, here, there's, there's the release. So it's coming. We're on it.
This is wonderful. And let's see where we can highlight it next.
Yep. Gets in our, any Village newsletters. Yeah. We're gonna.
Get it out there everywhere.
We're gonna get it out there.
Yep.
Yeah. On the board.
I mean, it's amazing. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a great, um, kudos to our, to our district. To even get mentioned nationally?
Yep.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah. That's, it's, um, it's some, definitely something to be, be proud of. So, um, what else? Fire alarm is done past inspection, up operational. So fire alarm's in place. We got a little punch list walkthrough with them coming up very soon. I believe the security alarm is going to be done by the end of the month, if I recall my emails. Uh, it's going to be done by the end of the month as well. The hillside, uh, we have against some final meetings. We have to go over some grading issues. That's, that's something that, uh, G P D was going to be working with on our behalf. And, uh, there's a strongly worded letter, uh, that is, has been put together in case they don't see it our way. And, um, they did not install the, they didn't grade the hill properly and they didn't install the, the mesh properly in many different ways. So that has to get done. But I do feel good that the, the five hundred piles are in the hill. So while we can't cut the grass, I, I do feel pretty confident that the hill is stable now. So I, I'd rather be fighting over grass than stability, but either way, we're, we're going to fight over this one if it doesn't get resolved. And we talked about the roof tonight. So did I forget anything? I know we, we've got to get, get moving here because we still have more agenda to go. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, I think we have a discussion next on board policy and bylaws.
Yeah. So I've got, I've got one policy, uh, that we're bringing before you now because that got released back in, uh, late July, early August. But there are, there are twenty-two policies that got released last week that are coming our way. So it's going to be a lot of changes. This one is specifically on personal communication devices aligned with, uh, cell phones. And this is a first reading. And I've put some things in public comments here, uh, some information that kind of helps explain some things. On August eleventh, the Department of Education and workforce put out this particular guidance. And this is linked so people could follow the links where they want to go. But this is about cell phones during instructional days. And an instructional day, according to O D E W, is any period of time in which a student is expected to be in attendance and includes not only formal instruction time, but also supervised activities such as transitioning between classes, recess, meal periods, and field trips that are occurring during a school day. And there's going to be a debate, I can see, uh, law has to, or this has to be in effect by Jan. One. A lot of this, we're going to have an effect now because you just can't give somebody something and take it away mid-year and expect it to go well. It's already going to be tough to manage. Uh, Neola, this, at the end of last week, put out some guidance specifically about O D E's release. And this is the legal alert that came out. So I just want to pass that down. It's just worth going through a couple of things here. Uh, looking at this second paragraph here, and this isn't necessarily perfectly aligned because this is the legal update. Whereas this came from a different section of Neola's guidance. It says, although the new law does not further define the term instructional day, other laws provide some guidance as to the terms of the meeting revised codes thirty-three thirteen point four eight states. The school district must be open for instruction with students in attendance for a stated minimum number of hours. Now, that's been going on for years. We don't, we don't go by days anymore. We go by hours, a thousand and one hours of instruction over at the, the, the high school age, for example. And lunch and breakfast periods, as well as extracurricular activities, do not count towards your minimum hours. So when we say that we have a six and a half hour day, we're actually here seven hours, but not six and a half hours. Why? Because lunch period doesn't count as instructional time. All right. Says the language cited above simply implies that a board has discretion when adopting the policy. It therefore seems reasonable to conclude that boards may, through adoption of policy, permit students to use cell phones during these non-instructional times. However, caution is advised in selecting the options that authorize use during non-instructional times, such as lunch, recess, class changes. It references the October eleventh, twen-, uh, sorry, Oc- October, what's wrong with me? August eleventh, twenty twenty-five O D E communication in which they said that instructional time does include lunchtime. The D E W provides no actual legal support for this definition. However, it seems consistent with similar messages and statements made recently by members of the legislature and the governor's office that the intent of the law is to ensure that students use cell phones, uh, do not use cell phones at all during any part of the school day. So this is going to be one of those things like the religious time for release instruction. So this is going to be one of those things like the religious time for release instruction. If you remember, we went with the very, very, very minimum. And they came back and they passed a new law that says, you guys didn't live up to the spirit of the law. And they've changed that law and we're going to have a policy on release time for religious instruction that is much greater than what we, we passed. And what they're saying here is be careful what you permit because they may come out with some stricter legislation at a later point. With all that being said, it's not January first, okay? So we do have some, some time to volley this back and forth. So when you get to this section of what, what the exceptions are, there are exceptions for students with health concerns and with I E Ps or five oh fours in which those devices aren't necessary. But the exceptions are when the teacher authorizes a student to use the personal communication device for educational purposes. Not listening to music while you're doing your homework. That's not an educational purpose. It is to actually do research, to complete an assignment, so on and so forth. When the principal authorizes a student to use personal communication devices for educational purposes during instructional time. Let her see, so what we did here is we added our own line here, and you'll see it highlighted. Before, it didn't say when the principal authorizes, but we put that in there. So when the principal authorizes during the student's lunch period, and we checked it. The principal's authorization is going to be based on what is allowed by law. And if law permits you to do it, then the principal can authorize it. It can happen. If the law comes down and says it's absolutely not, then the principal will say, well, it's not authorized. But this gives us now freedom to say, right now, you can use it during lunchtime if the principal authorizes it. So it gives us some flexibility where that statement wasn't there, we added that statement and it doesn't change the nature of the law. And that was based on feedback from our agenda review the other night. Between classes is out three minutes. It's not like we have ten minutes between classes. People need to get to class as authorized by supervising adult. And they are permitted to use it while riding school vehicles. I mean, we're not going to be restrictive there, as well as. Yeah, those are all your exceptions to it. So it's going to be one of those interestingly debated policies.
So if a teacher says they can use it during a study hall, then they can?
As long as it's for educational purposes, it can't be for recreational purposes. It can't be to watch YouTube. It can't be to use social media, because study hall is technically a substitute for instructional time. So that's, again, it's going to be tricky. I don't know.
Is there a first period study hall?
Probably. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think study hall, I, I would say study hall is a space that a class could be taken there for its instructional time. I just don't, I think it's going to be really, we're going to have to pay attention to it. It's a good faith effort. Yeah. There's a lot to hammer out with this. It's just, it's going to be difficult.
It is.
Because I know, because we had a no cellphone policy at Copley fifteen years ago. And they were flip phones at the time. They didn't even do what you could do now. And I know how, what about it was. We were taking phones every day, keeping them in the office, and a parent had to come pick the device up at the end of the day, every day. Some kids, it was every day. It just, I don't know. They don't have to enforce it. There are some people in the law legislature that believe when you don't follow these laws, it's punishable by your license. So it's, it's going to be tricky. We'll see. I would like to see a little bit more discretion with, with schools to be able to, to have more leniency. Yeah. It is, it's going to be tough. I could only do homework when I had music playing. That was in college. I had TV on in the corner. I had classical music playing in the background. I had a single lamp and I would do calculus. Because that's what I needed to focus. Believe it or not, it focused me. See, let's be honest, like, are kids going to communicate?
Airlines.
Yeah. Kids are going to communicate with each other. They're just going to open up their Chromebook and they're going to open up a Google Doc and they're going to be talking back and forth to each other.
Check yes or no.
Check yes or no. Yeah, so. But this is a, this is a first reading and, and, you know, if it takes three or four readings, it doesn't, you know, I'm not. This has to be in place by Jan. One. So there might be some changes or updates that come about and we get some more clarity. It's just like Senate Bill twenty-nine, they passed a law and they didn't recognize the ramifications of what they passed. And I think there's even guidance, if you go back to, you know, this section here where you can go out to the Department of Education. They have a whole report that talks about, like, sixty-something percent of schools already had cellphone policies in place. I believe. Yeah, it's like sixty-one percent already had cellphone policies in place. So we're going to pass, we're going to pass a law in which people, the majority already had systems in place that were working. Now, I know some people will, definitely the people during class time, in real, like, actual instructional time, are a hundred percent in support of this. Like, everybody's great.
But what school district is allowing that? What would be my question?
Allowing.
Allowing them to be on their phone during, during their class. Sure, but they have bigger issues.
Yeah, this gives, yeah. But it's those, it's those, those less formal times that it's like, like, come on. Like, you're really going to, like, but the challenge is this, if you have, you know, somebody who, their kid comes home and says, oh, I get to see my teacher. Doesn't even care. And that parent doesn't like it, they can reach out to, they can file a complaint with the state of Ohio. They can file a complaint with the school, then the state of Ohio. And what happens next? You know, who knows? They, they can turn you, any person can make a, file a complaint with the Ohio Department of Education licensure board anonymously. Anybody can do that. It's been that way. And is this something somebody's, who knows? I mean, it depends on, you got a B plus and you wanted an A plus. Who knows? I, I don't know. It's just, these are those challenging times that you're trying to navigate when people feel like lawmakers are coming after public ad and your license and your livelihood. You just don't know. It's a tough, it's a tough balance where school boards should be able to make these common sense decisions based on, based on, yes, some parameters, but also local control because you're elected and you represent your community, right? And it feels like there's less and less local control, but yet they say we're giving back local control. So we'll, we'll navigate through it. It's going to have its bumps in the road. But, you know, this could be another one of those student leadership things where we get some good feedback from our student leaders who are able to bring back feedback from their classmates, so. But that's the first reading. There's a lot there. That's all.
Thank you. I feel bad for the staff that hasn't enforced this.
But you're right, they have to be consistent. That's the only option. If you don't follow the law, you have to.
Yeah. Well, I keep track of, right, my smartwatch. I'm not sitting there talking to my wife through my smartwatch, but it tracks my steps. And it's, I do, I do get alerts during the day because I do work on my phone and I'm at least alerted to go to my phone and answer something. But if kids start texting each other and it's lighting up on their smartwatches, you gotta take with this, you gotta put that away too, right? It's just.
Pretty obvious though, if they're answering back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's okay.
All right.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, moving on to section seventeen, board business. See, we have, we're talking about delegates to the November sixteenth to eighteenth, O S B A conference. I guess it was, it could be Gary, I think, and he's not here. Is that correct?
Not later than your August board meeting.
Okay, so can we, oh, so we have to do this today?
I think he said he was going to do it.
He's going to do it?
Didn't we talk about that?
Well, he wasn't here. It was the last meeting. He came late, didn't he?
Mm-hmm, he did.
We're nominating you, Jerry, and.
Are you going, is anyone else going? I can't go.
Can't go either?
Are you going, Mark, to the conference?
Well, I'm not on the ballot this time, so I don't know if it's a wise use of taxpayer money. But having said all that, if there was a, I would say a need, but if there was a desire for me to, to attend, I'd probably attend. But I, I, I don't want to get in front of some other matter.
If we nominate Gary and it can be.
Gary could be the delegate. You could be the alternate delegate. And then if Gary can't do it and. Because you don't know what kind of issues they may be actually acting on, voting on, especially when everything becomes law in October from the House bill. And some other advocacy things are going to start popping up related to veto overrides and things like that. May have somebody that, even if you're not running, you can bring back very valuable information that would carry the board forward.
Okay. I mean, those are good, good kinds of, I, I don't want to get in front of what the other board members think, so that's, that's not my, my role here tonight. But if you would want to have me serve in the capacity that's been outlined, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I, there's a lot of ifs and buts that go with that.
Okay, so let's, let's do that. We'll do Gary as the delegate and Mark as the alternate. So do we have a motion for that? Okay, Ms. Prowse, I'll second. We'll vote on it?
Ms. Prowse? Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Do I need to abstain on this? Okay, then I, I'll say yes.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, and that's, that's eighteen, nothing else. Any board discussion, anything, anyone wants to bring up? No? Okay. Possible future agenda items? Do you have anything? Nope, hearing nothing. We'll move on. Agenda information. It should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, we've had considerable opportunity to study it and ask questions. Upcoming regular meetings, Wednesday, September third is a work session at six P M. Wednesday, September seventeenth at seven P M. And Wednesday, October first, at six P M.
Ms. Decker, if I can just add, I'm reading the language I don't think I've seen before, where it says that, that the regular meetings are going to be in the auditorium and the work sessions will be here, in the P D R. Is that right?
That is incorrect.
Oh, okay. So they're going, they're going to continue to be here in this room? I, I don't care. I just want to make sure I go to the right room.
No, it should be here all the time.
All here?
Okay, that's, I hadn't seen that previously.
No, it should be.
We can ignore that.
It's Bonner Ray Media Center. We'll fix it.
That, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. Thank you. Okay.
Here, I'll, I want to fix it right.
All meetings will be in the P D R room here.
Yes, all regular meetings.
Okay.
And special, and not special, but work sessions.
All work sessions, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone wants to discuss? Okay, then I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Etter.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Etter?
Aye.
Ms. Prowse?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Meeting is adjourned.